Meeting to order at 6:00. So I could keep my good record of starting at 6:00. And would you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Katie will call for us.
Commissioner Bird.
Present.
Commissioner Bird.
Present.
Commissioner Doris.
Present.
Chair Hallie.
Here.
Vice Chair King.
Here.
Commissioner Wobley.
Here.
Chairman Commissioner.
Here. Well, good. I failed to mention it's Tuesday, May 28, 2024, and I would like a motion for approval of minutes from April 9, 2024.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
I win. You win.
Paul Baker.
Aye.
Aye.
All those?
Okay, we're going to move to oral comments from the public, and I don't see any. Do we have any on anywhere else?
Motion to close public comment. Unless you have somebody on phone.
Look at that motion.
Okay, we can move on to item number four, which is a business. The fiscal year 2024-2025 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program Consistency with the City of Fortuna General Plan. Katie?
Actually, I'm going to kick this item off. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Chair Hallie and esteemed commissioners. I don't have a presentation for this. Brendan does. So I'm just going to kick it off. This item examines, as you mentioned, the capital improvement program's consistency with the general plan. So I'll introduce it, explain what we need from you guys tonight, and then Brendan's going to provide a lot more information about the capital improvement program and its projects. So, as most of you know, the city is required to prepare a five-year capital improvement program that prioritizes and assigns funding for public infrastructure improvement projects. California code then requires the planning commission to review new capital improvement projects annually to ensure that they are consistent with the city's general plan. So this is why we're here tonight. After the planning commission's consistency determination, the capital improvement plan will be brought to the city council on June 3 for consideration and adoption as part of the city's fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. So there are three new projects to evaluate this year. They're all water treatment and distribution projects, and they are consistent with the goals, policies, and programs of the general plan, public facilities, and services element, in that they address existing public facilities and services, their locations, and the plans and locations of future expansions. This includes the adequate, reliable, and safe provision of water to all existing and future city developments, and adequate wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Staff has reviewed the fiscal year 2024-2025's capital improvement program and found all projects to be consistent with the general plan in that they further short and long-term planning goals, policies, and programs, and support the future growth that is anticipated and approved through the general plan adoption process. And therefore, the community development department will recommend that the planning commission find the draft fiscal year 2024-2025 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program consistent with the City of Fortuna general plan after you've heard more about the projects. So Brendan, take it away.
And I mean, thank you, Sheri. She said it all, so we can go ahead and just, you know.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much. Once you get, Katie, could you put it in presentation mode there? That would be excellent. So, good evening. I'm Brendan Bird. I'm the city engineer and public works director. I very much appreciate the time this evening to discuss the city's five-year capital improvement program. And as Sheri had mentioned, this is an annual planning tool, our planning document that we go through every year as part of our budget process and part of our project development and delivery process. And it really helps, you know, inform what our long-term goals are, what our long-term maintenance needs are, and what our long-term expenditure needs are on the infrastructure side for the city. Next slide, please, Katie. So, just a brief presentation overview. I'll give a brief background on the CIP itself, when what the purpose is and what the purposes of our meeting here this evening are. Talk a little bit about the projects completed last year and that are henceforth removed from the CIP. Projects that were added this year, as Sheri had mentioned, there are three new projects that were added. I'll provide a little look ahead at active construction and active delivery projects that we're working now for the commission's, for the commission's knowledge on what we're currently working on. And again, and with the staff recommendation that the, the planning commission find that the new projects, as well as the existing ones, further the goals and are consistent with the city's general plan. Next slide, please. So, the, the CIP, as we call it, or the capital improvement program, what it is, as Sheri had mentioned, it's a guidance document. It's a planning document. It's a way for staff at the staff level across all departments to be able to identify project needs, you know, whether it's as simple as a maintenance project at the River Lodge, a big infrastructure project that we need to do to increase capacity to a service area for the water system or for the wastewater system, to perform road or storm drainage improvements, any of those things. It's a way for us to package those together, to identify what the costs are, what the importance is in that maintenance or project delivery over time, you know, is it something we needed to address this year? Is it something we could wait three or four years to address? And how do we work that overall infrastructure improvement or liability into our budgeting process on the annual basis? So, we will take this plan and actually every bit of it that is part of the coming fiscal year's budget actually gets co-adopted with our budget and brought forward as activity that we would plan to do in any fiscal year. So we develop it collectively over all of our city departments, but it largely takes place in our public works, in our public works area. So we get together with all of our crews, engineering and streets and utilities, water, wastewater, and really identify what our needs are, and again, make plans for how we're going to move forward and how we're going to prioritize projects and making improvements year over year. And as Sheri had mentioned, the real point of being here this evening is to do that consistency determination where the, where the planning commission finds that all the projects are consistent with the city's general plan and our long-term policies. So, next slide, please, Katie. So, before we jump into the projects that were added, I want to take a look back briefly at some projects that we have since completed and pulled out of the capital improvement program. So those will be some projects that you saw last year and that were discussed last year at this time that have since been removed. Over the last 12 months, the city has completed a installation of a backup emergency generator at the city's corporation yard. We completed a recoding of two of the city's steel water tanks, the two primary water tanks that serve the Campton Heights area and the hillside neighborhoods. We completed the storm drain infrastructure vulnerability project. This was a planning project that we received FEMA grant funds for to do an assessment of various storm drain infrastructure we have throughout the city and use that as a planning tool to, you know, plan for storm drain projects and improvements in coming years. We completed what we call the Prop 1 LID project along 12th Street, which is the rain gardens and the storm drain extensions that happened last summer, actually, largely in front of the high school there, going up to 12th and K at Bob's Footlongs. We completed installation of two other emergency generators as part of our water system, one at the Kenmar Pump Station that's located adjacent to the Kenmar Interchange there, another one on Drake Hill on a pump station we have that services the airport area and the hillous neighborhoods. We completed the basketball court project at Rona Park, and we completed a re-roofing project on one of our largest city buildings, which is our corporation yard down on Dinsmore Drive. So overall, from a budget perspective, also happy to note in there that all projects came in with our, came in within our original budget. So, you know, we're, we're doing a good job on identifying what we think our costs are and staying within our budgets to the extents that we can. Next slide, please, Katie. So going back to the three new projects that we added this year, again, those previous ones that we just spoke about were ones that left this current CIP that we're looking at. This one highlights the three projects we did add, and they're all, they're all basic maintenance projects, nothing necessarily big and flashy and out in the world. We're doing what we call the Water Valve System Replacement Project. So we do a number of projects in public works where annually we have set aside money with funding sources where we do things like paving, as, you know, folks will have seen recently, we did some paving on the Boulevard, we did some paving on Newburgh in front of the new police facility. Another annual maintenance project we want to do is replacing our water system valving so that we can, you know, do better and more appropriate water system shut offs when we need to, whether that's for an emergency purpose or regular routine maintenance purpose, things of that nature. So we are adding that as an annual project where we can identify areas where we need to do some rehabilitation for valving across, across the city. Another project we're looking at is our Strong's Creek wastewater junction box. So about a third of the city's wastewater that ends up at our treatment plant on Dinsmore Drive gets actually pumped over from a lift station down by Strong's Creek Plaza. It's one of our more critical pieces of infrastructure overall. It ends up at a junction box and monitoring area at our wastewater treatment plant. It needs some rehabilitation, so we're going to plan to start working on, on that, get a design in place and get the, the box itself rebuilt. It's been in service for a long time, and it's a very corrosive environment, so it needs rehabilitation from time to time. And similarly, another project at our wastewater treatment plant, we have a number of what we call secondary clarifiers. So this is part of our treatment train for taking raw wastewater and making it into treated effluent that we can discharge to the environment. One of our two secondary clarifiers, which has steel components in it, needs to be stripped down and, and recoded and re, rebrought into service to make sure that the metal stays in good working condition for a long period of time. So those are three projects, again, pretty typical maintenance projects and things that just keep, keep all of those various systems that we have in our water and wastewater system functioning smoothly and routinely. Next slide, please. So one project that wasn't on the completed list, but of course, I'd just like to throw this one in there because everybody has questions about it, is our police facility project. I just wanted to report to the commission here. This project is almost completed at this point. We're working on punch list items primarily, and although there has not been a lot of construction activity there for about four to six weeks now, we've been busy on the inside with IT type people and AT&amp;T and all the people who are working on outfitting, you know, the various computer-related or dispatch and 911-related systems that we're ironing out right now. We're targeting to actually move all of our staff over at the end of this month. We're working on coordinating those exact times right now. It's, it's interesting because we have about five or six outside agencies we're all working with to that, to that end. So, yeah, hopefully we'll be over there soon, and we'll be working on expanding some use over in City Hall over here, but just to provide that update there. Next slide, please, Katie. So, ending here with just a look ahead at some of the other things that we're working on out of the CIP this year. The, the primary project that we actually just kicked off today, the contractor mobilized to the site, we're doing a number of ADA concrete improvements along N Street. So the first street north of Main in between the bus stop at 11th and N and the library, we're going to be doing a decent portion of sidewalk infill there and some new curb ramps as an accessibility project between the bus stop and the library. It's a grant fund project paid for with program income from the federal government through the state government, and it's going to help us come to terms with an audit that the city received a few years ago for ADA accessibility in the area. So, that's a good project we're working on. We're going to be doing a sewer replacement project on P Street north of Main. We're working on a project to do closed circuit television inspections of all of our sewer system within the city so we can identify areas that need rehabilitation or otherwise have issues because they're failing sewer lines or whatever else the case may be. We're working on a number of storm damage repair items, as, as many folks know, is an exceptionally wet winter, especially in a few storms this year. And with that, we had a landslide that, that exposed a sanitary sewer line up 9th Street near Christian Ridge, and we had a few bank failures in some of our creeks near roads and facilities. So those are little pop-ups we're working on addressing this year before the rains come back again, assuming, you know, that we may get another year, so, or, yeah, I guess we'll know, we'll get another year, another year of that magnitude. So we really like to get some of these items buttoned up while we can here in the summer. And then we have a number of storm drain maintenance projects we're working on. We're doing some culvert replacements on Elizabeth Barkis. We're doing a culvert replacement, or rehabilitation, I should say, on the northbound off-ramp at 3rd Street, kind of by, by Sunbelt there. I always want to call it Ready Rens. And we're doing some culvert rehab, rehabilitations on South 15th Street as well. And then in addition to that, we have our annual paving projects. As the commissioners may have noticed, we did some on the Boulevard and recently reestablished the loops there. We did some paving on Newburgh Road, most notably at the intersection in front of the police facility. We are looking at doing some pavement rehabilitation near the Kenmar Interchange this coming year, and some more along Ronerville Road in addition to some additional stuff on Newburgh going out towards the Elizabeth Barkis area, Rancho Buena Vista. So, ending, Katie, if you could move one slide forward with that. It is staff's recommendation that the county, or the, the commission make a finding that the projects contained in the five-year capital improvement program are consistent with the city's general plan. And with that, we would move forward with taking it to the city council for adoption as part of the budget on June 3. And if, if any of the commissioners have any questions about the consistency or projects or anything else, I'd be more than happy to answer those, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great presentation from all of you, and I think it looks great. I don't have any questions or comments. I think I'm supposed to open to the public, though.
Yep.
So, I will open public comment.
Motion to close. If we don't have anybody online.
Take a look. We do not have anybody online.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Paul Baker.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion.
So I got a few questions, though.
Okay.
If you don't mind, if anybody doesn't mind.
Sorry. Yes, questions for the commissioners.
Absolutely. So, on Carson Woods, we have a, we're going to put a new pipe in because we have a one-inch line. Doesn't say how big the line is going in. What kind of line are we putting in?
We're putting in an eight-inch line.
So, under justification, we're going to go to eight-inch line?
Yes, we're going to an eight-inch line.
Which is huge compared to...
It's a huge line, so a one-inch is exceptionally small. That's, that's the size line we would do for a typical service connection to an individual residence. I don't, I don't know why it was ever thought that that would have been suitable for the area at the time that it was put in. Yeah, normally we would do on a residential area like that, more like a six-inch line. It is a very long and terminal route that has no loops to it. So we worked together, not only with our engineering staff, but also in discussions with the fire department to determine, hey, what size of line do we need to put in, not only to provide adequate service pressure and capacity, which an eight-inch line or a six-inch line for that matter would have been far in excess of requiring out there. What we're thinking about is fire suppression. So we really want to add a hydrant out there. There's a big issue, of course, with insurance and all the things now with folks, you know, living in standard proximity to fire hydrants and things like that. And the extra size going up to an eight-inch line is what was required to get that anticipated fire flow that we needed out of that area, so.
That's wonderful. On Hilltop, we're talking about what we're doing up there, was all that brought into effect when, before the building was done, all that building was done beforehand?
On Hilltop?
On Hilltop.
So the sanitary sewer project there?
Yeah, the six-inch, the sewer main and including all Hilltop. Says current city sewer ends at Hilltop Interchange, Ridgewood.
Yeah, so up at, there's the newer section of the Hilltop subdivision that is, I think, that was primarily developed by Danco about 15 years ago. That area has full new water and sewer as part of that subdivision. The historic, I guess, call it the, the older or more historic area of Hilltop Drive that comes off of Strawberry, that has no sewer up there. So all of those folks are on septic systems. There was a project about 15 years ago that was really led by the city manager at that time to extend the sewer infrastructure up there. That would be one of those areas that to deliver a project like that, and the approach at that time was to go to the residents up there and see if there was the interest with everybody coming together to actually pay for it, because that'd be one of those areas that, you know, the city would look at as, you know, we wouldn't spend other ratepayers' money to expand the service area for people who aren't customers. What we like to, what my goal in doing up there is I'd really like to extend the sewer up there so people have the option to connect if and so, when they choose, or if their septic system fails, or any, any reason like that. There are, there are grants out there periodically now for doing septic system to sewer conversions, recognizing that, you know, septic systems in, in high density like that can create some environmental issues, so there are some opportunities for that out there. So that's really what we're looking for with that. It's not a project that we have imminent plans to do or city funds to do with, but we really want to, you know, keep an eye on if there's some state grant where we could extend from where the Danco subdivision ended, which is right there at around, I believe it's Ridgewood or Ridgeview Drive there, and take it all the way out to the end of the road on Hilltop.
Okay. The other one, the other, basically two I got, is the Kenmar and Newburgh interchanges. So, we're talking about justification of traffic flow, pedestrian cycling, safety, I don't see safety problems where we haven't had an accident there, and I don't know when. What's going on? Why the justification for over $2 million just to get a grant to add more?
Yeah, so in those areas, well, we have a number of issues at both of those intersections. We do have a higher-than-state-average-level amount of collisions that occur at both Kenmar and 12th Street. The, the differences there in a lot of areas, and this is one reason why it's been difficult for us to get a lot of funding for it in the past, is a lot of times funding agencies look for fatal collisions, which we don't have, we don't have issues with there. But we have a number of smaller level of collisions that have happened at both of those areas. A large item that we look at in there, too, is that both the 12th Street and the Kenmar interchange areas provide no suitable, are real safe means for non-motorized vehicle passage. Of course, cars can move through there just fine, but if you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist, it's a little bit of the Wild West, or not certainly something that you would voluntarily want to do with your time. Move between the Riverwalk area, which of course is developing more in the tourism and restaurants and access to the river, and then going back to the neighborhoods, you know, whether you're in downtown or Campton Heights, or those areas where people actually live and may want to access those services without getting into a vehicle. On top of that, those are both areas, specifically Kenmar, where we have problems with queuing, queuing onto the highway, and ultimately being able to handle the vehicle capacity. It's an issue now. It's only going to become a bigger issue as the city continues to experience growth, especially with prospective developments in the mill site or other residential developments which are happening. Those, without improvements, those interchanges are going to become even more, even more stressed. Queuing is going to become a bigger issue, and with more people in substandard infrastructure accidents and other things, it can become more of an issue. Of course, Newburgh, where it intersects 12th Street in front of Paul's Pizza there, is, is a major issue we have, too, largely with queuing and people actually being able to make that turning movement to get on to 12th Street. Huh?
I was just thinking a stoplight would do.
Yeah, you know, we've looked at stoplights there. The issue is that to make a stoplight work appropriately, it's too close to the on-and-off ramp, so Caltrans won't necessarily sanction those types of things anymore unless you incorporate those into the project. And then to make them, huh?
That and the railroad.
The railroad is, is another challenge we've been talking to. It's the Great Redwood Trail Agency that owns and operates that area now, and those have...
Dig it up.
...have been some fun and interesting conversations. But they are, at this point, supportive of our projects as we're able to incorporate that non-motorized connectivity across those areas. And of course, the, you know, the trail is earmarked for, or the railroad corridor at this point is earmarked for non-motorized, for, you know, bike and ped stuff in there. So, they are supportive of the projects in there, and realistically, the, the roundabouts, the reason that they're such a preferred alternative is realistically their delivery cost is fractional compared to going to a stoplight style, because in order to make all of the same things work in a stoplight, what you really need to do is add a significant number of lanes to achieve the traffic flow you're hoping for. The problem is in both of those locations, but specifically with Kenmar, is we don't have any room to widen the road in those areas. They're so pinched by their original construction. There's creeks on both sides, there's the big hillside with all the eucalyptus trees. So the cost to do everything would require rebuilding overpasses and all sorts of things. And it's already going to be difficult enough for the city to deliver these projects without almost entirely outside assistance. I will say, the preliminary design and the design phases we're talking about now, those are all state dollars. We haven't spent any city dollars to advance this project in recent years, so that's been very helpful. It's going to take state or federal money coming in via a grant to actually deliver the infrastructure improvements with, you know, the scope and scale that we're seeing, so.
So these aren't dollars that we're looking at. We're just looking at this.
Huh?
These dollars that we're seeing, the 2.6 million?
Those are grant dollars that we receive from the state. Yep, yep, yep. So for Kenmar...
That's a whole different thing.
Yep, we just, we just closed out Kenmar. That, we got $550,000 in 2019, so we went through preliminary design and our environmental phase there. We just got $2.6 million in grants from the state, which is what you see in there now. So that is to complete final engineering design and to do the right-of-way acquisition work in order to get the additional area that would be needed to construct the improvements. About two years ago, we got $1 million in, in grant funding from the state to do the preliminary design phase of the 12th Street roundabout, which we're currently working on.
So when you just talked about everything coming through, everybody being able to make it, expand it to where we are able to get, because there's a lot of truck traffic, people going through, this is going to be able to suit that?
Yes. Yeah, right now, we look at, well, we look at multiple things. Of course, we look at geometries and what types of vehicles we want to get through there. And so, all of these things are designed to get without any curb mounting an STAA truck through there, which actually there's realistically no STAA traffic that comes through here, to my knowledge. I think 299 is an STAA route now, but not through Richardson's Grove.
Yes, they do.
They do? Oh. There you go.
Trust me when they tell you, you have, right down the street, you have tractor supplies running in those trucks.
Oh, are they? So it is designed for the STA, is the design vehicle, like many of those now, they have mountable elements that you actually see in the form of decorative concrete or other things in the middle. So the design vehicle through Caltrans is actually like a 94-foot-long behemoth of a vehicle that has, you know, more axles than the Brady Bunch has kids. So it's, yeah, they, they can move very large vehicles through there from the size perspective. And then from a numbers perspective, the roundabouts are anticipated to keep traffic flowing long, long into the future of development.
Right there, and they're bringing in that kind of equipment.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And so that we're being, we're being very perceptive to making sure that, again, the big trucks, the oversized loads, you know, we've gone all the way up and down as far as looking at all the design vehicles we could think about, but also calling folks like people that deliver houses, you know, to like the freezing-style houses, like, hey, give us the specs for your vehicle and your load, and, you know, let's try and navigate through this thing here. So, yeah, we're, we're confident it's going to be able to let anything that can physically get into the other highway areas of the county, so.
That'd be nice. That's all I got. I'm sorry, guys, I didn't mean to take your time.
That's great. Any other questions, comments, concerns from our commissioners?
I had a question. Looking at the ADA barrier removal, it pertained mainly to sidewalks. What's the city's next vision on adding sidewalks in locations where there's currently no sidewalks? So along Kenmar, South Fortuna Boulevard, by Strong's Creek, things of that nature.
Greatville Road.
Yes, yeah. All, all those are good ones, and I will say they're all of our hotspots. Throw Redwood Way in addition in there between Renner and, yeah. We are planning, the next area we are planning to do some infill of sidewalk, and we are hoping to use actually the same funding source for, would be to put sidewalk in front of Newburgh Park, that would extend from the police facility to the Strong's Creek Bridge. of Newburgh Park that would extend from the police facility to the Strong's Creek Bridge. We're hoping in doing so too that we can more formalize the parallel parking that occurs along there for soccer use and other areas and to help, you know, give pedestrians a better path into the park, um, as opposed to having to necessarily be so far into the road, especially when we have large events there. Um, so we're thinking about that, not only from a park function, but just a safety perspective as well to be able to add that. We've tried to address a number of other areas through grants, some grant-funded projects we've been seeking. Um, the city has continually applied for funding for what we call our Strong's Creek or our John Campbell Memorial Greenway Trail, which is our vision to take a class-one trail actually from the River Lodge to Newburgh Park. Um, with that, we've tried to get some of the sidewalk infill, as you noted, down in the Strong's Creek area to connect that down to Kenmar or to get it up to Burger King. So those are areas that are on our radar. It's just unfortunately and with our funding sources, the money for concrete and paving is very limited. And so we have to, um, take advantage of things like the CDBG funding source or other grant-related projects that we get dollars for where we can incorporate those. So I will say each and every one of those spots is a, you know, is a known area that we would like to do everything as soon as we possibly can and we are opportunistic when we can be. And the next one we're thinking is, is going to happen if all the stars align would be in front of Newburgh Park there.
I have a question for you. On the CIP project 9125 for the secondary clarifier recoding project, there's a, there's a, some language in it says sandblast repair and repaint. And then I looked at the, the photograph and it looks like my project truck sort of corroded and was it ever studied to just replace it? Is it a cost issue? And then the, the follow-up would be how long is that repair anticipated to, to last?
It should last some time. That clarifier was constructed in the 90s and it's pretty common in those environments to put in steel infrastructure and then to put it like a, like a high anti-corrosive style coating on it that can stand. You know, you'll see a lot of metal that gets coated with, you know, some conventional paint-like materials. We put special things on there that are made to stand up to the extra corrosivity that's in wastewater. Typically you'll see those things last on the order of 20 to 25 years. And as you start to see what looks like a high level of degradation, what it really is is just the coating going away where it starts to expose bare metal. If you strip it down to bare metal, bare metal and recoat it, you know, in a lot of ways it can be as good as the day you installed it, so long as you are doing what we're hoping to do and keep up on it routinely enough to where it's not, you know, compromised coating for so long that you start to corrode or compromise the metal itself, so.
So, so it's been studied that the, the corrosivity isn't all the way through?
Correct. Yep. Yep. We, we routinely, we drain, uh, both of them every year and we clean them and, and bring them out of service so that we can, um, do some routine maintenance there. We have recently gotten both of them inspected under an on-call contract we have with our engineering consultant. So they come and they measure the thickness of the coating that's remaining, they measure and they look for, you know, corrosion pockets in the steel itself to determine that it's still structurally sound and, and fine to be coated. So, yeah, their recommendation, um, after inspection was to move forward with just sandblasting and coating. Yep.
I had one more question. With the water and sewer rate increase that's being discussed currently, well, if that does go through, would that help fund these particular projects or?
Absolutely. Yeah. We, um, so the five-year CIP and we're looking at the water and sewer rates over a five-year period, so all of the costs that you would see as proposed in here, um, that are proposed for city dollars, that is. So we have projects like the, um, the Hilltop Sewer, which, you know, we've acknowledged that that needs to be a grant-funded project, but anything we've proposed to come out of the Water and Sewer Fund would be included and forecasted as part of those rate adjustments.
Well, that's, that's great discussion. Do we have a motion or am I jumping the gun?
Okay. I have a motion to find the fiscal year 2024, 2025, um, here capital improvement program to be consistent with the city and Fortuna's general plan.
Second.
All right, we'll call vote. Commissioner Bennett.
Yay.
Commissioner Burke?
Yay.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Chair Howley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kine?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
And we did go through that, just, just asking a question now that we're done, but we did go through this information, a lot of it, at one of our prior meetings because I remember the, yes, thank you.
This is brought to you guys annually.
Yes.
And so there will be, you will be repeating some of the projects, um, because we don't have funding for them or they're just not quite on the schedule yet, but, um, as Brendan stated, you know, when we get grant funding or, you know, when, if the rate increase passes, then we'll have funding to get some of these completed.
Yeah. And as, and as you'll see, that's why the staff report really focuses more on the new projects, you know, because we have a lot of these projects that you see year over year because they're part of that five-year process. So it's the new ones we tend to highlight, but of course, you know, uh, it's always a good opportunity to talk about everything else that's going on or, or the old ones that we're finally getting to, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready for number five? Um, discussion items, Main Street Gateway Project.
So, hi again, I'm Sheri Meads, the Community Development Director, and this is a pretty fun project. Tonight we, I will be producing and would like to receive your feedback on the Main Street Gateway Project. Please turn your mic on.
So I'll just quickly repeat that. You know what? I'm going to use this one. I feel like I'm looking away from you guys. Um, so I'm Sheri Meads, I'm the Community Development Director and this project is a discussion item. Um, it's an introduction and to receive feedback on a grant-funded project to do a little bit of beautification in the city, which I'm pretty excited about. So the City of Fortuna is partnering with the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, um, to beautify these two median areas that we probably all drive back and forth, um, on Main Street as we are coming into the city from the southbound Main Street, southbound 101 Main Street exit, and then as we leave the city on Main Street heading, um, to the northbound 101 entrance. And as you can see in the, um, picture here, the medians are just not welcoming. They don't provide any type of a, um, welcoming feel as people come into the friendly city. So the city, uh, applied for a Clean California Grant, which at the time we applied for it, there wasn't funding for the project, but we've since come into, um, information that we should get anywhere between 150 and $300,000 to beautify these areas. So this is just a picture, um, that shows visibly what you see now as we come in to the city from southbound Highway 101. The star is representing the larger median, um, bigger star, smaller median, um, that's part of the project with the smaller star. As you can see, it is just south of the Sea Crane Building. And here's an image that you see as you leave, and this is actually not so bad. If you go out there now, there's quite a bit of weeds growing up and around, so this one doesn't look as bad through Google. But as you can see, it's, it's just, it's plain, it's barren, um, it's, it's underutilized for something that, um, could be something quite lovely. So here is an example, a proposal of, um, what Erin Ponte from Caltrans provided. She's a landscape architect for them. And what she's done here is, uh, given us, there's two options that I'm going to show you, and the only difference is the smaller median area and whether it's landscaped or not or just, um, decorative concrete. So the elements for the large median are the same in both. There is a, uh, dry creek that surrounds a meadow area with, um, low-growing bulbs with, that'll give us some, um, beautiful color in the spring, hopefully. There are three small conifers included, a lot of drought-tolerant and native plantings. And then it's surrounded by a four-foot wide perimeter of stamped concrete that should look like, um, river cobble or something to that effect, something similar to that. So if you look at this one, you can see the small median just has that decorative concrete. And this option does provide a little bit more, um, pop in that smaller landscape area. It's going to be low maintenance, low-growing, drought-tolerant, um, easy to care for, uh, some type of, of greenery. We haven't determined exactly what it will be. And what I'll say is that the four-foot perimeter around the large median is going to make it, um, pretty easy for folks to access to do maintenance on it and, and that type of thing. So this has been something the city has desired for years. There was actually a, uh, an attempt to do this in 2016 and 2017, but there was no funding for it, so it didn't move forward. It's been reinvigorated, if you will, um, through the Caltrans Clean California Grant So this is an example of some of the plants that could be, um, planted. As I mentioned, um, many of them are native, all of them are low water use, low-growing because we want to keep the visibility there. The only ones that are, are tall, and when I say tall, they're not going to be super tall, would be the, um, conifer trees, which at this point we're anticipating having three of them, but definitely placed so that it doesn't impede anybody's view. And this is a, a photo sim of what it might look like as we come into the city. Um, when you think back to the slide that I showed you of how it's, you know, just bare and overgrown with weeds, this looks far more welcoming and, um, pleasant. We don't know for sure exactly what the text will say, but it will definitely be friendly and welcoming. So that's something if you guys have a strong feeling about, we'd love to have your feedback on it. And this image doesn't show some of the other aspects of the, um, the gateway sign itself, which I'll show you in, in the next slide. There's, there's a little bit of an artistic component to it and, um, there'll be space to have the seasonal things similar to what the, um, Kenmar Gateway Sign has. So these are just some examples of what it could look like. Again, we're looking for feedback on it and you can see that we, we, we like the fish and we kind of included the, the Meandering River, uh, again, which is similar in a nod to the Kenmar welcoming sign. And that's pretty much, I think, all I really have to say specifically about it. It's, you know, the design is, is still under, um, definite, uh, consideration and it, the monument itself will be likely made of precast concrete, um, and it'll have messages on both sides. So the project itself is exempt from CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, because it is, um, just installing landscaping and does not require the removal of healthy, mature scenic trees.
Nice.
Um, the next steps, some of them are ongoing now, which is to finalize the funding amount. We don't know for sure how much we're going to be able to get from Caltrans. Um, and after we've received that definitive amount, we'll establish a project budget, execute the grant agreements. Brendan actually is currently in the process of receiving direct quotes for the civil work, which includes the excavation that'll be required, the concrete work and landscaping itself. Once we know how much money will be left after that part, we will get quotes for the gateway monument and any additional art that would be, um, attached to it. And then we'll contract out the work necessary to complete the project. So that's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much for your time. And now it's just up for you guys to, to talk about and let us know how you feel or any input you have.
I like when you said additional art.
Like the fish that we had or?
You know, we come around the corner, right, and it's kind of the same thing right there by Ray's, we have the deer.
Yes.
Gorgeous.
And, you know, when you come into town, you see the deer and as you go through town, you see the deer, something like that. It'd be kind of cool.
Yeah.
No, I like the project. I know that the police department had put out something a long time ago to do something there and evidently that didn't get funded, so it's still a great area to do something. It just, it, it, it looks crappy now, so anything would look better.
I didn't want to say those words, but yes.
It's been like that forever. In the late, no, very early eighties, my friends and I would cruise. I swear it's been the same just space, you know, and it's, there's nothing to keep you from driving up a little when you're a new driver.
Right.
There's nothing that stands out. It's just, but that's exciting. I'm happy about that project. Gateway Project.
Yeah. Any thoughts on how you would like it to read or themes?
I'm with Chris. I just love the deer in our town. Whoever created those, there is one with the missing leg. We don't know why or how and if it could get fixed, but the, it just gives us some uniqueness to our city.
I can tell you did it.
I, I like that it's gone.
No.
It's different.
I don't love that it's gone.
Oh, interesting.
It shows that we're an all-inclusive town.
Yeah.
I, I think the more beautification we do, our town's great.
It is great.
It's wonderful and I love the one by, um, Newburgh that we were talking about, the one that has the fish. Well, now it had the puppy when I came home one night.
Yes.
And they change it and it's just, it's lovely. So it'd be nice if maybe this could be probably not interchangeable with the seasons as the other, but.
That's the goal. Um, I think there's going to be enough room on it. A lot depends on how much money we get through this grant. We will definitely price it out and do the best we can, um, to get as mu, as many elements into it as possible, but the, the art part of it and the interchangeable panels can always come later.
Yes.
The most important thing we think is to get the landscaping and the, um, the, the concrete around it, the, the paved area with the, hopefully a rock pattern and the stamped concrete and the, the actual hello and goodbye first.
It's great.
And if we can do it all now, we'll be very happy.
It is going to be great. I'm excited about that. And this is the first time I've heard about it, so I'm very excited.
Yeah, it's a fun one. It's a really fun one.
I would like to see a redwood tree.
Well, you know, that was my thought. I wanted to put like little statues of redwood trees on the small median, like metal ones.
I mean, like a real redwood tree.
Oh, I would love that, but no, they would not. Nope.
They grow forever.
Too much fall, redwood, you know, leaf fall, branch fall.
But it's what we look like.
Agreed. As someone who moved up here because of the redwoods and the coast and the Eel River and all of that, this project means a lot to me, um, to be able to try to, to capture the things that, you know, you guys already see every day, but for me, it's also special and new, but this is great anyways.
Some metal salmon, but no real salmon.
Right.
We do have real redwood trees.
We do, and I love them. They're so beautiful. They call me.
Yeah, I would like to see that more as a symbol for this town.
I do have just one.
Yes, please.
The Clean California Projects, um, while they, they fund the initial construction, I've noticed that maintenance sometimes, and, and I'm not talking about Fortuna, just in general from what I've seen, um, that sometimes there's no money for maintenance. Has that been considered? And even just looking at the square footage of the landscaping and the location, does, is there access for maintenance crews to safely get out there? Because the traffic starts to hum around that area, so it's a consideration and then also, um, it's, if there's any way to reduce the, I mean, I'm a landscape architect, I'm a plant guy, but I have noticed that the more you do that, if you don't have funding for future maintenance, um, that that tends to look bad if it's not taken care of. And it's, it might actually be, um, worth considering more hardscape in, in, in that scenario.
Yeah. Um, there's a couple of things in there and I'll dress, address what I can. So one of the thoughts were that that pass-through area between the two large medians, if need be, we could, um, close those off for any maintenance vehicles that needed to park. And then by having that paved area around the landscaping, which maybe we expand if you feel like, um, that, that is a, is a thing, um, but we are definitely choosing plants that are very low maintenance. Trust me, we are a general services guy. Trust me, we, our general services guy is going to make sure that it's something that he feels that, that we have staff to, to take care of. Because I had, I had all these lofty plants and stuff, and they're like, come on, Sheri, we're not going to be able to do that. So, I had a reality check, but, you know, I can make sure and, and have that conversation, because that would be the worst thing that we could do, is beautify it to have it look crappy worse. And Brendan may have stuff to add.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just throw into there, you know, we look at it similarly, right, like we do with our medians in other areas. How can we safely get in there? And to Sheri's point, we do have opportunity there with some extra lanes to, you know, cone off some areas, so we can get in there and work routinely as we would need to. And it would probably be something that would be folded into the maintenance responsibility of our parks crews, in addition to our general services crews. As far as just some other things included out there, there's a water line located right next to it. So, a part of the project would include doing a little service connection there and having automated irrigation, you know, so the plants could, you know, grow quickly and healthy and be irrigated without any need for the crews to get out there. Being new construction, we'd also include in it, you know, double weed barrier and a lot of other things that, you know, typically help fight off a lot of the more difficult maintenance over the years. And, and because we would design this thing not to take stormwater, like we would in some other basins like we do on 12th Street, you know, overall, some of the maintenance tends to be a little bit easier, because you're not introducing as much water overall into the system as opposed to the specific plants. But, again, we really try and focus, you know, I'm, I'm as many as any other, any other person, sensitive to the time of our folks and the ability, our, our ability to, you know, fold in new things. And we're really trying to make sure that whatever we do limits the amount of new maintenance liability that we do have, so.
Just a comment on the, the art itself. And some folks have already alluded to this, but we have stuff already existing throughout town, and it would be nice if, if everything sort of had a consistent vocabulary and tied into, in some form or fashion. And I always think of the, the Lodge, you know, that's on a, that's on a sign, on a road sign as you're going on 101 into town. So it's, to me, it's kind of like the, the, one of the landmarks that people recognize. And they have some stuff going on out there that's, that's pretty cool. There's a, there's a big salmon, and, I don't know, there's just some interesting details. And I, if there's any way that, that it could be consistent and we could form some web of art, I think that that would be really neat. Overall, overall, I think it's a really cool project. And actually, my, full disclosure, my coworker did the design, Erin, and she's, she's great. She does all the, the cool, she gets the cool projects. I get the erosion control.
Right.
She gets to do the art.
She did a great job. So, I was actually out at the Lodge this weekend, walking my dog, and I saw the salmon you're talking about above the picnic table. And I thought, was there was something on the other side, too, that disappeared? It felt a little off balance to me. But I did, I noticed that salmon, and I'm like, ooh, we either need to do one like that or take that one. Not that I would want to take from another place. But anyways, I totally agree with you. I think that that's a great idea, and we will keep that in mind as we move forward.
Great.
So thank you.
Do you need a recommendation?
You can, if you want. There's absolutely no action required. It was mainly just a discussion to see how you guys feel, and if you had any input. And I, I really appreciate comments. You can always email, too, if you think of something afterwards, like, oh, I wish I'd have said that, or, or whatever. Feel free to reach out to me. I'm smeads@ci.fortuna.ca.us.
Nice. I, I'm excited about it, because I love the one we already have, and they interchange the seasons, whatever's happening, and I always admire it every time I come into town.
Yep.
And I'm going to admire the next one. I'm very excited. Well, if nothing else, we have item number six, the Planning Commission Staff Communication.
I don't have any specific items for you. As I've said previously, we do have, you know, quite a few projects coming up, you know, so I think we should have publicly our next meeting. Potentially, we'll know by the end of this week, likely, if it's ready for the next meeting. If not, then I'll let you guys know. And did you have any questions, or?
No, I'm happy. I want a motion.
Motion to close?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
There. I have a gavel.